Well, I feel like I'm a smoothie grandparent, so I thought I could probably go too far. So arrange if I take out the word mother, Ian, and we'll put in parents. That's on 3.4 on page 15. For those who weren't at petition and weren't mentioned. I'd also like to take this opportunity at the beginning to thank both Sue Ward and Joy Kennard for their contribution and work going down the consultation. An awful lot of consultations that rightly has been done. And if we go to page 16, 3.6. Thirty-one consultation events were held, of which there is a detailed write-up on every single consultation event, as in how many people came and who they were representing, every single one of which, sometimes, no, no, every single one of which I have read. And with 480 submissions, obviously there were the petitions as well. With the petitions, we don't know whether they're service to their users, whether they're, or who they are, or, and I haven't, I haven't been through, through, obviously, the petition. But I have been through the 480 submissions. There was a mixture, the bulk of the online with SurveyMonkey, but there was also the handwritten submissions, copies of which actually are under my desk, I see here. And I also thank Joy because I know that she also met some parents individually, who didn't feel they could take part in a group discussion, so she met them separately. I think that just shows that the commitment that both Sue Ward and Joy have given, Joy Kennard have given to this consultation, so for that I thank them very much. As I've said earlier, and I know a lot has been said, so I don't wish to repeat it, I am conscious it's half past seven, but it has been, it is a tough decision whenever you make changes to a service, and a service when it's passionately felt about, as came through in the consultation. My disappointment is that, although I haven't known that really decided beforehand, and actually no one has contacted me directly about this at all, with the exception of Councillor Brian Lattick, who spoke about East Wickham quite passionately, and was one of the reasons for the additional 194,000, and very much challenged me on the geographical spread, as did borough councillors, not town councillors, borough councillors from Highworth, who talked about geographical spread and how Highworth were very much isolated, which is why it was important that conversation started. And thank you very much to Janet Urban, still here, I don't know whether she is, but thank you, thank you Janet, for the conversations you've been having with officers, and your approach to this, in wanting to look at the service that you could still offer, and coming forward and having discussions about that. And, you know, that's the approach that I, I thank colleagues for, and for members of the community who've come forward, you know, councillor Cracken, you know, did research on America and recommended a book, Councillor Swindon, spoke to me and met with me to talk about what was a family centre, what would be the impact for his residents in Thresher. And so I thank those people that have taken the time to really get involved and talk to me. It was important that I reinvest five, which I think the council centre will bring up later, but that to me was really important, because they are in the most vulnerable areas. And yes, I know in open forum, a resident spoke about, a couple of residents spoke about the non-vulnerable, and having the support for them, but my authority has got to be to support those that are classified as vulnerable. But that's where the family support outreach work, on 2.7, for those following the report on page 14, the additional 194,000, the money included in that for Highworth and Stratton, that's the important work that we have to, to look at commissioning going forward, and working with our health visitor team, where this will sit for the next two years, and how do we support our communities in helping themselves? And that's going to be a very important piece of work. And I know something that, having spoken to officers, something that they're really invigorated, being, excited about being able to do, and do personal targeting. Got to highlight what our government have done, there's the criticism of the government, the investment in the double-two-year-old funding, and 15 hours a week, and the three- and four-year-old funding, I think really must be recognised, as is the additional funding for health visitors. And to plug the MyCareMySupport website, where we've really got to encourage, it's already live, if anyone wants to have a look at it, but really got to encourage, because there's lots of toddler groups and church groups out there, there's actually one that I know someone's come to speak to about in North Swindon, actually just for dads, at the weekend, for someone that felt that was really important. I look forward to working as we go forward with the two multi-generational family centres, really important piece of work going forward. And as I said earlier, I couldn't repeat myself enough earlier, volunteering, and those that did indicate that they would wish to volunteer, very much in the Butterflies area, where the Volkerly responses come from. But doing nothing isn't an option, and we have to make changes. Budgets are limited, and that's out of our hands, and that's not unique to Swindon, that's a national issue. So it's not a case that Swindon are bucking the trend and doing, and making cutbacks, it's across the country. We have to recognise that, and we have to work together to do the best we can for the limited resources that we have. I'm sure that others will have questions, Chair, I'll ask those over there, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, second question. And councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chair, I've just, I've three questions to ask, I'll just ask the questions and I'll go with the normal remit about getting into a debate with people. First question is, I refer to page 23, the summary of children's centres, it refers to the impact that the closure of children's centres will have for parents in informal network building and social contact with other new parents, especially those parents with low self-confidence. Does the cabinet member agree that what she is proposing and abandoning, the approach of children's centres in local communities, will lead to young families being cut off from other young families in their communities, just at the time when they need the support and advice most from their peers?
Thank you, Chair, no, I don't agree, and I think that I'm happy to arrange a briefing for Councillor Brown on the work that our health visitors do, and the family nurse partnership. And the health visitors, especially with the increased number of health visitors, the health visitors will signpost vulnerable families, they're the ones that get into the homes, but they will signpost vulnerable families and will go with vulnerable, with young, with mums, if support is needed to a group, or get a group of mums together. So, no, I don't agree.
Is there a question, councillor Brown?
Yeah, I did make that commitment not to come back, no, quite difficult, but I will.
I thought you said you had three questions.
Yeah, I did. Second question is, a cabinet member in our report goes to some length about the need for children's centres in terms of refer to, refers to social care services. But wouldn't the cabinet member agree with me that actual benefits of children's centres will be measured not by the number of referrals to social services, but by the number of vulnerable families who have been prevented from requiring social services, as a result of the support and guidance they've got from children's centres?
Very good.
Thank you, Chair. I'll probably say again, no, I don't agree with all of what you say, do I think that children's centres do the work, yes I do, as I said earlier, that is without question, that we have limited resources. But what I can say is that, and it's in the report, that the children, is Councillor Cracken, is he around the corner?
It would be a councillor Perkins.
Oh, yes, sorry, I couldn't see you. I've come out to actually come to.
Always first to councillor Perkins.
This is a type of glibness, you have to, this is actually really serious. The social care, we go to the social care figures, and it's with regret that actually a number of the children with social care that take into care haven't actually accessed the children's centres, but that's in their area, but that's not to say that, do I think that the centre could have been prevented from the work that children's centres have done? Then yes, and I recognise and acknowledge the work that children's centres have done. But that is why, in the most vulnerable areas, it was important that those who are ring-fenced are not touched, because that's where the majority of our sols come from, and that's why I reinvest those five.
Thank you. Finally, this basically, the cabinet members spoken about the need, it's not, it's not up to us, everyone's doing this, this is being forced upon us by austerity cuts, et cetera, this is a, this is a decision, a choice, that this administration has made. And, yeah, the cabinet member states in 3.12, for example, that maintaining existing children's centre provision is not possible because the council's limited financial resources. The cabinet member has said before she would recommend children's cent, she wouldn't recommend children's centres closures if it wasn't for the council needing to make cuts. If this is the case then, why has the cabinet agreed to pay, and this administration, fifteen million pounds for a car park in the town centres, which wasn't needed? That car park, you may laugh, but that car park, that fifteen million pounds, is now incurring debt charges to this council, a income revenue stream of one million pound a year? And would not the cabinet member agree that if the cabinet hadn't made, paid for that car park, there would be no need for children, any of these children's centres to be closed, because that little pound would have easily covered the cost of the seven hundred thousand pounds you're looking to, you're looking to save?
No. And, well, councillor Perkins, obviously, I've never stopped councillor Perkins from talking if he wishes to come in, but I'm actually not going to respond to political posturing on a car park. You've lowered this conversation, you did it in July, to a conversation about a car park, it's political posturing for your belief, and it's, it's been listening of you, Councillor Brown, in my opinion. This is about a very important service, it's about balancing our books, ensuring we have fairly affordable council tax in Swindon, and that we target the money where it's most needed, and that is, is what we are trying to do. And when you are in, if you ever, you will know, thank you, Councillor Brown, I didn't interrupt you, you will know that we often make difficult decisions, but I'm not going to refer to any comments about a car park.
Sort of continual, very story to be repeated and repeated and repeated, because, number one, this car park has always been used for a shortfall in any part of the budget, I don't know how many times the car park has come up, but it can save, save the world, I think this car park could have done. But in fact, the fact that the car park has been used by businesses, the fact that the car park has been used by the residents of the, of the housing units that were built on, on the site, the fact that this car park is there, and, and, and because the car park's there, the new PCT, I think, would not be going forward, which is again, is a service for everybody, including the vulnerable people in Swindon. The actual cost we seek from the car park, it goes nearly all the way at this stage to meet the debt charges you mentioned, and in fact, that we know that the car park is paying for itself, it is already meeting budgetary costs. So, it's, to actually use a fifteen million pound investment, I, I just don't understand, I do get rather tired of trying to educate people about how, how the economy of the town will actually grow, because after all, without the car park, this, I know trying to be political, tries to cripple the economy of Swindon going forward, but in fact, but in fact, the economy of, of the Swindon, of Swindon, and this is very, very important actually, helps the people, particularly those which are actually currently being vulnerable, to get out of poverty, and to provide jobs, and income, and support for all families within Swindon, right? So every time you actually knock any development in town, you're knocking the people, and you can stand up and say you support. One thing I do say, actually, and we're about, and that's regarding, we talk about this administration, because this administration has been going on now for a few years, and it was this administration that when the last Labour government actually pulled out the, the, the funding of the children's centres, stepped in and funded it for eight years, without the decision and support of my colleagues, when I was the member of Children's Services, we would not be talking about children's centres tonight, because there wouldn't have been any in Swindon, right? And don't get, there were short starts, and they therefore may evolve forward, and I understand that, about the history of, of short starts, and where children's centres come forward. Support actually for children's centres was something which this administration fought very hard for. In fact, I got full support to provide the only non-rundown academy in the country, because it was accepted by this administration, the need to support the children right from an early age, to ensure that they got involved with education, and the parents got the support that they needed, right? And, and Swindon Borough Council went into debt to the government to help build the Swindon Academy. In fact, they were only able to pay off that debt in the last, my last few years, when the Headland Site was finally sold and, and developed. That was all part of the history of what this administration has done. I could go on about the fact that in 2001, when I took over actually Children's Services, that there was very few, few buildings within Swindon that were purposeful schools, there was a sixty million, one pound debt, a sixty-one million pound debt at urgent care, the children in Morden came in with their hats and coats on every day, with water running down, down the walls and through the ceilings, and this administration spent over two hundred million rebuilding the, the schools within Swindon to provide, right? Pobet places for the education of Swindon, and North Swindon, all those schools were built during that time. Right? So to say this administration doesn't care is so, so far away from the truth, because I would not support this going forward if, number one, we weren't in the economic situation we're in, and anybody who even wants to look back at the very, very recent histories understands why we're in this economic situation. We have to take responsibility for the budgets, we have to take responsibility for this town, not just for this next election, as it were there, but going forward, as we have done for the last eleven years, twelve years of this administration, right? And very successfully as well, because the businesses in Swindon have grown, the schools have been replaced, and the support has been expressed, all children, not just for those who are included in the Ausstead title of being vulnerable, and I believe that all children need equal support, right? Because sometimes in their lives, children and their families always need support, because they always consider education to be the greatest leveler, right, for, 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 for people going forward. And, and therefore, to make this a political football, actually, vulnerable children, and it was, not, not saying it was tonight, but at the previous time it has been, is totally wrong. To start setting off the economic growth of the town against the need to spend money in other areas, no decision is easy, and if you ever get the chance of sitting in administration, maybe you'll then have to make the difficult decision as well, because throwing up a fifteen million pound car park, which is the centre of the future of Swindon, right? When you never come, come up with any, any real viable alternatives, any budgets, and the, when I first, the council in ninety-three, and I can't remember you ever coming forward with a viable budget when you've been in opposition, although you had problems when you were actually in control, because actual education was such a mess at that time.
So far down every lane, he's going to get lost in them, but it's, it's so far down every lane, you'll get lost.
But, but one's got to, one's got to look back, as well as looking forward.
Chair, sorry, just to interrupt, can I put this small camera on the table? Yeah, thank you, Chair. Small is beautiful, obviously, but.
I've been saying that for years, Stan.
Yes, yes, how did you know? Right, thank you, I mean, this is such an important decision to make in here, and I, I tried to actually look, what's actually, what is the, the core meaning of actually the word children's centres, and looking actually at the government's website, it is, the core purpose is to improve outcomes for young children and their families, with particular focus on those in greatest need. I think every councillor would support such an idea. Children's centres are a wonderful thing, and this is so hard to make such a decision, where we actually are tearing some of them apart. And is why I, like many, I think, here, would actually seek not to do such a thing. Now, it strikes me that when we had actually had the pre-meeting, you were quite right, Chair, when you actually said, your administration actually had looked at nearly everything, and had cut back where everything was possible. That has been a good example all the way through, when we come back to the budget debate, there is not a lot more one can do without cutting essential services. So what is the alternative? The only alternative is, is to increase the, the council tax. And obviously, as we actually highlighted there, a two percent increase, we increased it by six hundred and thirty, six hundred and sixty-three thousand pounds of spend. That is the alternative. That's not a council tax that affects just the families with children, but it's a council tax that affects everybody. But sometimes education is worth that money. I think actually, when we come to the big picture, actually, with the general election on the doorstep, there doesn't seem to be one party that said, well, elect us, we will increase the funding for local government. I haven't yet seen one do that, and that is such a shame, because local government is so important, we see it in everything we do, and children's centres are part of that matrix, where it is so important. And therefore, I think the only way forward amid a crisis across the country, if you look on the websites, you can see children's centres closing down throughout the country, from Rotherham down to sunny central Bedfordshire, they're all cutting children's centres, but it's not a good policy. And therefore, the only way forward, I see, is if we work together, and actually vow to actually work together to actually increase the council tax, because we believe all we're paid for is worth fighting for, and that is why with, my party, I think, would share that, we will go forward and actually work with others to see if we can save what we need, and children's centres are part of that, which is desperately important to Swindon.
Councillor Dempsey. Thank you, Chair, I've got three, three questions, if I may. The first question is, is related to paragraph 3.8 in the report, and that highlights the fact that 1,963 people responded to the consultation to say that they objected to your proposals. And I think that's a big, it's a big number, but I think that number also belies the real stories that lie behind that number, and I think we've heard some of those tonight. It belies the professionals that I think do an exceptional job, I've met them at Butterflies and Ladybird, and I think they do an incredibly important job for the children in our town, and the parents who I've spoken to, and whose stories sometimes are so touching in terms of the impact of the children's centres on their lives, the one-to-one support that's provided, and the benefit that they get from children's centres in the support that it provides. So the number, I think, is important, but the stories are equally as important, and I think we've heard those tonight. I think a lot of people, when they first heard about these proposals, thought it was a fait accompli, that you had made those proposals, that whatever we said, that however many people responded, the decision had been taken, and that, and that you were already on this path. So my question first of all is, how many people responded to the consultation to say that they were in favour of your proposals? And what would have needed to have happened to have got you to do the right thing, and to have thought again, and to have kept the seven children's centres open?
Do you want to respond to all of these at the end of your presentation?
Sorry, sorry, that was my first question of three, if I may. And I could put the second, the second and third question forward, if that would be helpful. So my second question, Chair, is that in paragraph 3.11, it discusses the overall issue of whether the closure of the children's centres will lead to an increase in the number of children that have to go into care, and that is something that I think is deeply concerning, it's an issue that I raised both in, directly to you, you know, at scrutiny and at council, and at, at cabinet previously. And I highlighted the fact that just a one percent increase in, in the number of children going into care, that's eighteen children, a cost of maybe twenty-three thousand or fifty-six thousand to this council, could lead to an increase in costs of around about seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand pounds. So, in effect, just a one percent increase in the number of children going into care could wipe away the savings that you expect to make. I don't see a projection of the number of children you expect to go into, into care in this particular document, and I wonder whether tonight you're confident enough in your own policy to say that you do not expect the number of children going into care to increase as a result of this policy, where you actually make that promise in front of people here, say that you're confident enough in your own policy, that you don't expect to see the number of children going into care increase as a result of this? Because I think that, before, I think I felt that you've evaded that question, and I feel that 3.11 is an evasion of that question. So are you confident enough tonight to make that promise in front of your fellow councillors and the public? And my third question, Chair.
The Chair was going to take these three together, but I think that's quite important, I'm about to address now. I actually think it's quite a ridiculous statement, because I don't know how you could correlate that, you could actually say, look at the social care figures, that our figures are going through the roof, so you could actually say, well, actually, children's centres aren't doing any good then, because the numbers are going up, so we should close them all and divert all that money, using your logic. So I don't agree with your logic, and I don't agree that you would be able to track those children that come into care, which happens constantly, it's not a case of, we haven't taken any children into care this week, but that's not how it works, there are constantly children coming in, some staying or going on child protection planes, so you wouldn't be able to say, well, they were going to that particular children's centre, they're no longer going there, so they're now into care. So I think it's quite a ridiculous statement, but actually, if I was being this genius, I could use your statement to say, because the figures have gone up so much over the last year or two, then actually, they're not working, and all that money should be diverted. So, you know, quite a ridiculous statement, in my opinion.
Well, Chair, I object to that, because I think that it's actually quite sensible to be able to look at the number of children that are being referred into social care that aren't going to children's centres, and those that are being referred into social care that are going to children's centres, and make a projection based upon that, I think that is sensible policymaking, because I think it would be a disaster, a disaster, if we saw more children going into social care as a result of this policy, the cost of the council going up, but the damage to children and to families as a result of a policy that you're taking, that's not ridiculous, that is sensible, and that is decent policymaking, and that is the kind of policymaking that we should be doing in this council. But the final question I have.
Can I just come in here, because you're making an assertion, councillor Dempsey, and I don't think anybody in the country can provide you with the sort of information that you're asking for, because you can't make a direct correlation, and as councillor Foley says, if nobody goes, the reverse of your argument is, is equally true. So I, I think you need to move on, but let's take the third one.
Okay. My final question, Chair, is that in previous meetings, and councillor Foley reminded us of this, is that you promised that the remaining five children's centres would remain open in the, in the opening cabinet paper, and that kind of unraveled in the subsequent discussions, which is that that policy only appears now to remain valid until the general election, according to the leader. And I, I think you've said that if this policy, if the policy of proposing the remaining five children's centres were to be enacted, then you, councillor Foley, would resign, it would be quite convenient, I guess, that you could be reshuffled into a different cabinet portfolio. So are you confident enough in the remaining five children's centres remaining open, that you would say that you wouldn't serve in a future cabinet if that policy were to be enacted?
For those people sitting in the public gallery, to every opportunity councillor Dempsey gets, councillor Dempsey asks, if such and such happens, will you, will you resign? I've said it publicly a couple of occasions, so I'm not even going to bother, but one thing I will note is that, well, you'll give us your assurance that when you're unelected next year, as the parliamentary, parliamentary representative, that you will, you know, not rejoin Swindon Borough Council, because I certainly don't think you'll be elected, but I think your constant press, I resign, at any opportunity we can, I think is absolutely ridiculous.
Wrong direction, wrong direction.
Sorry, Chair, but I thought we were, could be playing political games with this, and I think it is an important. We just want to know how strong a commitment it is, that's all.
Well, we will find out when the next government is formed, what the difference of children's centres is, so let's wait and see where we are next.
So that's question one. Your first question, there wasn't actually a question in the consultation, asking residents, so I can't give you the, the figures, but I, I know, I read through the Volkerly responses, there wasn't a very clear breakdown of what the responses are actually referred to on page 23, for those that are still following.
I think we're all following.
Yes, I just want to make sure, I'd like to put to know which paper you are, but I, something afterwards, I got, you know, I wasn't quite sure when we referred to different things. On page 23 is a very full summary of what the consultation stated, but there wasn't a specific, specific question to the way you asked, so I can't give a clue.
Thank you, Chair, I respond to councillor Perkins's inaccurate rant on the next stage.
Yes, Chair, a couple, a couple of points, briefly. It, it is unfortunate that the debate about the car park has come up, but I'm ready to be corrected if I'm wrong on this, but I'm not aware of any amendments being proposed to the capital programme, or any formal amendments being put forward by the Labour Group, not aware of any amendments being proposed to the capital programme for the last four years, so I have to be corrected on that, but I would just say that if, if... But I would just say that if the Labour group do not wish to support things, they ought to put forward alternatives. So I'm happy to be corrected, but I'm not aware of any where Labour ever voted against that, proposing amendments in respect of the capital programme. So I'm saying that, if I can be correct, I'd be happy to do so, because I'm not aware of any proposals. But to turn to the substantive issue here, the issue is, how do we best provide services for children in Swindon? And when you consider what is best, you have to consider what resources you have, what your statutory obligations are, those things that you must do, and those things for which you have a discretion. When you consider that, you have to consider the government guidance as to what local authorities should be doing. We are not required in law to provide children's centres in this exact way. It's not a requirement. We know that funding cuts have to be made. So in our possible thing we can do, we are saying that we are going to continue to provide on the existing model for those areas where there is greatest need. And nobody objects to that. That is completely agreed. But when you're considering what to do, we are not closing children's centres, we're changing the nature of the provision. Now, it's not going to be exactly the same, and there's going to be transition, which may at times be difficult, but it has to happen. The decision could have been made to go for straightforward closure, but we didn't. We have made a decision to, or a recommendation at this stage, to look at providing an alternative type of provision. Now, people may not like that, and change isn't easy. We're not making this decision because we thought people were going to rush out and support it. We're making this decision because this is the best possible thing we can do, given those restrictions that are on us. And that's the reality. Now, for various reasons, people may want to come forward and say, well, why not do this, why not do that? But, as I say, when you're looking at capital programmes, that is something that has only been raised today. It was not raised, I'm aware, at the time those other decisions were made. So if we wish to be realistic, that we are making decisions, cabinet, to do the best we can in the circumstances in which we find ourselves. We've heard about compassion. Compassion is not going to automatically balance the budget. This is why you have to make a judgment call, and this is why it is difficult. Councillor Foley has explained at length how she's paid great attention to this, and I think has done extremely well in not spoiling perhaps some of the more emotive comments. But councillor Foley is extremely passionate about children's services. That is why, that is why we're now going through this process, that a tough but comparatively easy decision would have been straightforward closure. That would have attracted protest, but it would have been perhaps easier in some ways. But there would have been greater implications from that. So I can only repeat that we have considered absolutely everything we can. The decisions are not going to get easier, and that's going to apply whoever forms the next government, because the money is not there. That is the reality. So to those people who may not be happy with this decision, I understand that. We don't wake up in the morning and think to ourselves, well, which group of people can we upset today? What's the most contentious decision we can make? We're elected to do our best for only half of our residents, and that is what we're doing. But once the decision has been made, then I would urge everybody to make the best of it, because without the restrictions of the Osteb regime, new opportunities may arise. It's not going to be the same, but it need not be necessarily worse. So I would say that we are doing our very best. We have listened to everything everyone's said. I've read the summary of the consultation responses. But fundamentally, the issue is how we balance the budget and do the best we can. And I feel that that is what we are doing. So whilst it is a difficult decision, I don't hesitate from supporting councillor Foley in doing the right thing, because this is the right thing. And it's something we will continue to monitor and continue to pay attention to. But we have to get out of this way of thinking that things can't ever change because we feel a service should be provided in this way. That is simply not realistic. And to hold our offers of hope that things can't ever change or shouldn't ever change in the financial reality in which we live is not realistic. And for those reasons, I support this report.
And do you, councillor Small?
Thank you, Leader. Just to respond to councillor Holland, he's incorrect in his assumptions on the capital programme, but I won't pursue that. I'll really talk to him outside over the particular issues. What I would welcome is the, in the sense of the contents of councillor Holland's speech to this meeting tonight, is that he has made an attempt to justify the decision that you are going to make in the sense of supporting the recommendation. But it's come from a financial viewpoint rather than a service quality detail response. And I think what it does fully emphasise, if you look at 4.1 on page 20 of your report, when it says alternative options, basically, it's saying, there is no other alternatives, we've got to save the money. This is the only, so therefore, it's the only alternative available to us. Now, we all appreciate that money is tight. I can't criticise Mr Pickles on many occasions for what he's done to local government since whilst he's been in office. And things are not going to get any better while he still remains in that position. And I mean him as a person, rather than any political party. I'm sure somebody else would have a little bit more guts to stand up for local government. But what I am disappointed about was that councillor Foley, who I've got a lot of respect for, and I always agree what he's doing, I think he's doing the right thing on this occasion, was that I think that what we haven't heard from him today is the justification for why this decision is going to be made. Forget the financial side, I'm not on about that. Councillor Holland has covered that, as again, I may not agree with councillor Holland, but the actual service implications and how that provision is going to look in the future. Now, we've all, myself go back a long way, and Stan as well, where we've all had to make difficult decisions. I've had to close schools before now, under Wiltshire County Council. But the first thing I've done when I stood up to actually move that motion, and I think it's one of the problems we'd have in the cabinet system, where instead of the committee system, where you can guarantee there will be people voting against you, when you've got everyone party, is that I had to justify to that committee the reasons why we were taking that course of action, justify to the public in their response why that course of action was taken, why the decision we'd made was a better alternative than the one of the status quo. And I feel that in your opening of your address to this cabinet meeting tonight, that you haven't actually covered that, about why. You've covered the financial side of it. You've been probed in answering questions, has pulled out some of the more responses. But I do think there are some gaps about why certain centres are closing, why the new look provision is being put in such a way. It may be in this report, but you still have to justify it verbally to the people of this committee and to the people up in the public gallery. And I suggest that when you sum up, if I may be so bold, is to say that you take that opportunity of saying why you feel this is right for the service provision. I think that you are making a mistake. I know that this is a financially-led decision, and it's cuts being provided, basically, because of the cuts received from the Tory government. I accept that, but I think it's wrong. But if you are going to go down that line, then please justify the reasons why. And so these people in the public who've come here tonight can actually go away knowing that they will 100% feel you've made the wrong decision. But they know why you've made that decision, even if they don't agree with you. At the moment, I don't think they do. All they know is it's a financial decision, not a service decision. So that with the finances councillor Holland has, I ask you now, and you're summing it up, to deal with, why this option you've gone for will maintain or continue to improve services for the children of this town.
Before I ask councillor Foley to sum up, are there any other conclusions that matter?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the lead member and officers for making changes since the reporting July, because she is right. I did ask to meet her and officers to talk through the challenges that occur in my ward, not only in my ward but across the borough, and indeed with my responsibilities of cabinet member for health and adult social care. And that is that there will and always will be individual vulnerable families living in areas where there are no children's centres. And I'm delighted that she has responded by identifying a sum of money, in this case £194,000 over a two-year period, to enable those families to be identified and supported. So I'm delighted about that change. And perhaps it responds to one or two have indicated that there have been no changes since the original proposal, although that certainly is a major one for me, and I know will be a major change for those families, particularly in the part of my board in East Wychell, which is mentioned in paragraph 2.7. So I thank officers and members that have been involved. Thank you.
And councillor Small, can I ask councillor Foley to sum up, please?
Thank you, Chair. Before I sum up, can I do a point of information? You might recall at the start of the meeting, I know she has now left, Mrs Garten, Mrs Jo Garten came down to the table and asked a question. She also claimed that she'd emailed Mr Gilbert and hadn't had a response. Mr Gilbert's had a chance to check his emails, and her email was received on the 30th of September. He responded to it on the 2nd of October, and she acknowledged his response. So he did respond to her. So I can only think that there's been, she's obviously forgotten about it, and I'm sure it was just an error.
Or it was a holding response.
I've seen the, yes, she was meeting up with another officer, we appropriate to say the officer, and that was...
Chair, I'm concerned about what's just been said in her absence. It could well have been a holding response. Let's not make up presumptions.
I've read it. I've read the email. But I will get Mr Gilbert to do that formally back to her, but I've seen the emails. Thank you very much, everybody, for your contribution this evening, both in open forum for those that came at the start of the meeting, and for the comments from various colleagues here tonight. I feel that I want to address councillor Small's comments, if I may, because he accepted, obviously, the financial position. I think in all departments, we have a financial envelope that we have to deal with. And for me, it's then about setting the priorities for the department, because that's my role. I'm not a social worker, but I'm here to look at the policy, the policy direction that we're doing. I can only do that by taking guidance from my officer team and in discussions with them. And so there were a number of private discussions with my senior officer team, the senior management team, about how we best focus our money in the limited, the envelope that we have. And we have an envelope, so we then narrowed down, looking at the preventative services, and where in the preventative services the money was best targeted. A Labour policy I agree with was the Sure Starts centres, when they were first developed, as councillor Perkins has responded to. And I do think it was the right thing, which is why, if you actually look at the five that I've really fenced, and as officers know, and the finance officers know, and my cabinet colleagues know, was an absolutely, in this, you know, ring of steel for me, that was non-negotiable, the five were being ring-fenced and were not being looked at, because I feel those five original, the original Sure Starts were in the right areas for the right reasons, and those reasons continue to this day. And that's why I made that decision, and that was my decision, with the support of officer team, looking at the areas that they represent, they did the service. And that's how it came to that decision. And it was about how we, I know we heard in the chamber earlier on this evening about people saying about the non-vulnerable, about the support for them as well. But we do have to look at the most vulnerable, because that's where the priorities are and have to be. And so that's why, looking at the envelope of money that I had, I had to target the most vulnerable and ensure that that happened. My report, Chair, is tabled with the two amendments that I made.
Okay, I've had it, I've seconded it. Where's your flavour, please? The recommendations as amendments? Moving on to items...
What you want to hear us say is that multi-generational centres cover the high-temperature services, basically, is what you're saying. Can you tell us why do we never, what I can guess about them? We can raise the council, that's why I want to say that. If that were fair, do you, if you don't have to say for years, or you don't have to... In the parish, we try, I mean, is it a...
I'll just give you a couple of minutes to...
I just feel that this is, I think it's for this, yeah, that's why people don't raise the council.
Thank you, Chair. Here's our item seven, page 29 of the report bundle. We've already discussed briefly, in the context of the previous discussion, the nature of the financial challenges that the council in common with the public sector face. We could have a political discussion about that, I don't think there's much very to need. Because ultimately, regardless of personal opinion on that, the position is what it is. Nonetheless, in this report, there are a sizable number of recommendations, two pages worth, starting from page 29 to page 30, which I will go through. But the key point to make is, and I'm very grateful to the finance team led by Stuart McKellar in respect of this, that we are in a position to bring forward draft budget proposals for 1516 at this stage. This is the deliberate result of trying to make decisions as early on as we can, because we know that we have to think of the long term, that we have to set a budget on an annual basis. If we knew what our funding was for the next three years, then of course, we can make a three-year budget plan. Now, we have in mind the long term, that the mechanism by which this is achieved is that if savings could be achieved in a year, then that may lead to an underspend, which can then means work commence for the next year. So the fact we're able to produce a draft budget now means that there is additional time for consultation. But I must emphasise that we do not know exactly what the position will be until the central government announces what funding we will get in December. It's fair to say that officers' projections on this are generally much on the mark. So unless somebody in central government suddenly decides to go on a spending spree for local government, and we can cover our opinions on how likely that is, we are faced with a position we have. So I think I've covered some of the recommendations which the cabinet has recommended to note. Turning to the actual recommendations, I'll just go through these one step at a time. It may take a while, but it's important that everyone is clear on what they are. 2.2.1 is that it is a recommendation that the council tax support scheme should remain unchanged for 1516. Members will recollect that the government made a decision to abolish the council tax support scheme in its form that it did exist, and to delegate the money to local councils. When it did so, it provided that there would be a specific exemption for pensioners. But as we referred to at the time, it did so with less money. So this means that some people are now required to pay council tax, who previously might receive 100% of their council tax benefit, to pay their council tax. They will now receive less than that, it's 80%, and they'll be required to pay that. So far, our experience has been that most people who have been required to pay are paying. And with cross-party support, we have been working to do what we can, so that if people do get into difficulties, that we are able to resolve those before commencing formal recovery action. Everyone will be aware that if you receive council tax sums and subsequent favours, it's a relatively small amount, in money's ode, become significant amounts. relatively small amounts in money is owed, become significant amounts in court fees and faglet costs. So we are, we are working on that and monitoring it very closely, and so far, it seems to be something that's something we are, we're working on. Perversely, by working on this, we actually potentially reduce our own revenue stream, because the council does make money from that process, but I think it's really a moral point that we should seek to avoid that where we can, and that's going well. The next point is in respect of consultation, 2.2.2, that we should commence consultation effectively now, as soon as possible, so that we do have more input prior to making a final recommendation to council in February. 2.2.3 relates to council tax support grant, remember this generated a not insignificant amount of interest from parishes, because the wish for council tax support grants to be passported to borough and town, town and parish councils, we're now proposing to passport the full amount as we did last year. In connection with parish councils, we have had success in this with Stratton Parish Council, that where possible, and where there is desire on the part of both ward members and parishes, that we should seek to work with them in order to seek to achieve savings, that is a proposal we wish to continue to develop. The specific item on district heating, it's not with some £60,000, and the detail of that is in the report, I don't propose to speak that on detail. We also, the report also makes reference to the position of general reserves being at £5 million, but again, that will need to be reviewed once we know the position. 2.7 makes reference to the children's centres, which we have already discussed in some detail. And again, the final point is that officers are authorised to implement savings as soon as possible, in order to achieve those savings early on, so that we can continue to move forward. So overall, as a financial process, notwithstanding the difficult content of the budget, as a process, I'm extremely pleased we're able to be where we are on this stage, doesn't make decisions any easier, but as a process, I'm pleased that we're able to come sooner rather than later to have those discussions to take place. So thanks to officers, and naturally, the debate about the budget will go on for obviously for some time between now and February. At this stage, I'm not saying anything about council tax, the position is not completely balanced, but as set out in the table at page thirty-four, we currently have a gap of 2.6 million, which at this stage in the year is good, but this is before a council tax freeze grant or a council tax increase. Freeze grants equate to approximately 800,000, or a council tax increase would equate to approximately 1.2 million. So even without doing additional savings, that figure 2.6 automatically reduces by one figure or the other. I don't presume anything about council tax at this stage, because again, until we know the position in December, we can have that debate at that time. So that is the report, and happy to discuss any other matters further.
Can I ask councillor Small to... Thank you, Chair. Taking more words than are necessary can make a point, it's a blip of disease, but it also betrays quite often the weakness of the point being made. Councillor Holland took quite a long time to say that we need new amendment to delete the car park, and no, we didn't, I'm being invited to remove amendments at venues such as this, move on to your hat, because I'll be here every day. We did question it at length, at scrutiny, and neither Kevin and I can remember whether it was pushed to the vote there, but certainly had it been, then the tribal nature that scrutiny now is, would have meant we'd have lost anyway. So that's the first point. And the cost of the car park, I get tired of the imperfection some people attach to the numbers game. 3.11 of this report lists £113 million as the non-HRA capital debt, and the cost of servicing that debt is £10.7 million, that is 9.5%. The money borrowed for the car park was borrowed at a cheaper rate, because that's the way the world is in the last three or four years, and my best guess at the revenue effect of building the car park is 1.2 million, eight percent, eight percent. Four percent over 25 years, and that's normal for a construct such as that, four percent is £600,000, further four percent loan charges. The pool rate actually isn't currently 4%, it's somewhere around 3%, no doubt the director of resources can put me right by a few hundred thousand pounds, but it is around £1 million. And to pretend that someone else is dishonest, and dishonestly leads the public, stop doing it.
Chair, I'll respond briefly to the shadow member for resources question. The scrutiny minutes for October I have here just says that the report be noted, and the capital programme goes to council every year, and again, I'm not aware of any amendments being proposed at all councils, so if that information can be shown to me, then we can see that.
Chair, can I just clarify that point?
Okay, it's also a point, yeah.
I'll be very brief. First of all, until the last year's council, annual council, sorry, budget meeting council, it was not a requirement for any amendment to be recorded in the council minutes unless it was successful, and therefore, if it failed, unless it was a recorded vote, would not have been, because it does record a decision of the agenda item and not the detail, we've always had that in our minutes. So that's number one, just for clarification. Number two is that the Labour group did vote against the capital programme, and also it was raised to scrutiny as an issue, as you know very well with scrutiny, once members have raised their decision, the final thing is it be noted, because there is no justification for us as a scrutiny committee to then make, refer it back, because it's passed the scrutiny test, even if it is wrong.
Councillor Foddy, is on this point.
It is actually regarding the com...
Can you keep it brief?
A very, very big problem.
Is that probably the...
I'm losing my voice, and don't second it. Yeah, no, it's taken up councillor Small's point, I don't agree with him about the million pound figure, but one thing he really forgets always in this...